Good morning. Welcome to this study session. Glad to have you guys here. Lots of energy and excitement. We always appreciate that. Maybe not really. But, uh, yeah. No, it's good to have you here. We'll call to order this study session for May 29, 2014. The first item on the agenda is to review our consent agenda and for our next regular scheduled council meeting. On the first page, we have items 1 through 4B. Hopefully, everybody's up and running with the computers. Items 4C through 5B. Items 5C through 5E. Items 5F through 5H. Items 5I through 5K. Items 5L through 6D.
Yes. The agenda, we do have a presentation on 6D.
Wonderful, yeah. 6E and 7A, and I did have that note. I do need to mention, and I'm sorry I got ahead of myself, Vice Mayor Glover is out of town, and also Councilmember Richens will not be with us today. They're not calling in, and we hope they have safe travels. So, we always miss them. But, item 6E, we do have a presentation. Ms. Candace?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. What we wanted to do, it's not really a full presentation, but just kind of highlight, 6E is the secondary property tax for the city of Mesa. And we just want to kind of highlight a couple of the tables that are in the council report that is provided. One thing we do want to talk about is for our fiscal year 1415. This is our first year that the city of Mesa assessed value is rising. We have had decreasing assessed values for the last few years. So, this is our first year we're actually seeing the assessed value starting to go up in 1415. Where we're seeing that is in the residential. So, right now, we have not seen the commercial come back yet. However, it's getting closer to coming back. The residential, however, is the one that's leading the assessed value right now going into this fiscal year. What that lets us do, in the city of Mesa, we manage the levy, the actual secondary property tax levy. And so, we modify or adjust the rate to make sure that we are, we will receive the levy amount in order to pay our general obligation bond debt service. So, when we look at this, we go from 1314 to 1415. Our levy was $22.1 million. The additional increase in the assessment allows us to decrease the actual property tax rate. So, you'll see that here. When it goes from 1314 down, we still, again, receive the 22.1, which was the original levy. Because of a successful bond election in the fall of 2013 for our public safety and our transportation projects, we then will be increasing the levy or adjusting the levy to cover the debt service related to those particular projects over the term of those anticipated bond lengths. That would add the levy to 11.3. So, then our new levy would be 33.4. Again, the rate that we are asking you to consider is the rate that would allow us to receive the 33.4 in order to pay the general obligation debt service.
So, Mayor and Council, just again, as the state, it's important to note, because this is the first time that we've seen a portion of the assessed value actually increasing since we levied the secondary property tax. And we've always talked about maintaining the appropriate levy to pay for the debt. And so, again, as Candace was suggesting, that because of the increase in the assessed value, we've actually been able to decrease the rate what it would have been without that increase by about eight cents, .08. So, that's good news for us that we will, and we're, again, our commitment is we will adjust the rate to meet exactly what is needed for the debt service payment. The only increase that is being experienced here is a result of what voters approved in the last bond election. And of course, with that, that's increased the levy up to 33.4 million. So, we've had to adjust the rate for that. But, for that, if it weren't for that, we'd actually be reducing the rate by about eight cents, which we're doing effectively in the net number that's coming for council.
All right. Well, good. Any questions along those lines?
Is this levy on water?
Always.
That's the utility bonds.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that information, that clarity. Okay. It looks like we've, any other, excuse me, were there any other items on that last page? Okay, good. We're good there. Okay. The next item then is to hear a presentation and discuss the 2040 general plan. Mr. Wesley.
Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to be with you this morning, talk a little about the general plan. You'll see I've got a couple of the folks here with me, so we're going to use this opportunity to talk about just a little bit more than the overall general plan document itself. But just for the first quick introduction, we have our existing Mesa 2025 general plan. It's been in effect since 2002. It's time to update that particular plan, as well as some of the other plans that were adopted back in 2002 also. Previously, the Parks Department has processed and approved a Parks master plan update. At this time, we're also working to update the transportation plan and the transit plans for the city of Mesa. So, today, we're going to give the Transit Department and Transportation Departments an opportunity to give you a brief update on where they are in their processes for updating their plans, because they do roll into the overall general plan update. And after they've done their presentations, we'll come back and continue on with discussion about the general plan. So, first, I'm going to turn it over to Jody Sorrell to talk about transit.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council.
Good morning.
I'm here just to give you a brief update on the transit master plan. We were here, we came to council probably, I think, at the end of 2013 to show you the direction we were going. So, this is kind of a summary of where we're at. The transit plan has four basic themes, in that we're going to focus on developing transit priority corridors, look at connecting activity centers. We took a, we're going to prioritize frequency over coverage so that we can generate more riders and kind of balance our local transit needs with the needs of the region so that we're meeting a little bit of everything. So, this next slide, this is our current transit system. As you can see from the map, we have, the bulk of our transit system is in an area west of Gilbert Road. We're gradually expanding a little bit east with our Power Road Route and some other routes. Next slide, please. So, this particular slide shows our average daily boardings on these routes, and it includes light rail. And so, the biggest orange line is obviously the light rail alignment that has the largest average daily boardings in Mesa. That's the largest, the thick orange line at the bottom of the screen or in the middle of the screen, that is Route 61 at Southern Avenue. So, that is our next, that's our bus route with our highest average daily boarding. And then the rest of them, you can kind of see how they fluctuate in area. And just to kind of give you an idea, we have two routes that run on Main Street, the Main Street link and the Route 40, and they carry, together, they carry the same amount of riders as our route on Southern Avenue. Next slide. So, this kind of tells you where the heaviest boardings are by stop for these routes, so you can kind of get an idea where most of the people are getting on the, our, at Superstition Springs Center down in the, at the 60 and Power Road. That has, we have 10 bus routes that go into there, so that's one of the reasons why that dot is so heavy in there. So, our transit master plan has, what we've done is we've divided it up into a short-term scenario, two midterm scenarios, and two long-term scenarios to give us some flexibility to deal with the growth. And each scenario has a high-capacity transit option and then a more detailed fixed route option. So, this slide shows the high-capacity options where we have, the green line is our light rail, and our light rail, it shows our light rail extending to Gilbert Road. And this short-term, I should go back, the short-term scenario really takes us out to extending light rail to Gilbert Road, so what our transit options will be. And the orange lines show future bus rapid transit or high-capacity corridors. So, Main Street continuing down, right now, we have the link, which is a high-capacity transit service that operates up Power Road to Main Street and over. So, as we go to Gilbert Road, that route will continue to shorten to the east. We have high-capacity transit with the link on Arizona Avenue and Country Club, and that shown, and then possibly looking at some high-capacity transit on Southern Avenue and Dobson in that area. The next slide. This shows our bus routes and that we would be having, and kind of where some of the intensity, some of the changes would go. And you can go to the next slide, and it kind of summarizes it. So, in the short-term, what we're looking at really is to extend light rail to Gilbert Road, to modify the Main Street link so that it originates at Gilbert Road instead of Sycamore, to modify Country Club so that it possibly serves the Fiesta District, to increase peak frequency on the Country Club link, Route 30, which is University, 45 Broadway, the Alma School Route, Country Club, Mesa Drive, Gilbert, and Power. And all of those, except for the Power Route, do connect to light rail. And as we continue to go, as we continue to grow, we'll want to make those bus rail connections more accessible for our riders. Really like to increase frequency, Sunday frequency on Route 61 on that, on Southern Avenue. Right now, that frequency is 60 minutes, so we'd like to get that to 30 minutes. And possibly add four new trips on some of our express routes, the 533, and I think that says 525, it should be 535, which, that runs out of the Power Road, that runs on the 202 on the north end of the city, and then Route 533 runs along on the US 60. So, both those routes are starting to see increased capacity. They're reaching their capacity in what they can carry. So, summarize the opportunities we have when we're doing this transit master plan, short and long-term, is there's, ADOT is doing the ADOT passenger rail studies, so looking at how we would connect to that, extending light rail to Gilbert Road. With bus, we're looking at our transit priority corridors, which feed into the general plan, and then working with Valley Metro to develop some region-wide standards and measures for the bus system. So, that will, turn it over to transportation.
Were there any questions on the transportation issues? I know we have two councilmembers that are actively involved on transportation, so. I'm looking at the two of them. They're right there. You guys all good with that? Excited? Good? Wonderful.
Does rail have to go down Main Street?
Change it now.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I like the idea of modifying the link on Country Club to serve Southern Avenue, because, again, I think, long-term, that fits in with goals, possibly some regional goals really long-term, to create that high-capacity transit corridor, to extend light rail to downtown Chandler. And I know that Chandler would like to see at some point, this could be 15, 18 years from now, the light rail come down, Dobson over on Southern to Country Club to head down to downtown Chandler. And I think the, having the high-capacity transit corridor there now, modifying the link, is something that will be an asset for the region to show the need for the ridership in that area because of the concentration of population and the opportunities for economic development. So, I think that's a, that's a good action to take at this point in time. I think it will help prove the case later on that the route that Chandler is suggesting is something that would benefit the region, again, 15, 18 years from now.
On a shorter term, looking at, first of all, adding the four new trips to the 533 is long overdue. I think that's been pretty close to capacity for a long time with this slight dip, given the recent recession. But how is this transit plan, either midterm or long-term, probably more midterm, short-term, fit into the Gateway Strategic Plan, because we're seeing accelerated growth in southeast Mesa, and there's no transit service there as of yet? So, how is this going to dovetail into that plan so that we extend that service down that direction?
When we come back, we'll have, I have, I can meet with you and show you the midterm and long-term, but we do show extending, for example, the link service down Power Road all the way down to the ASU campus. We're working with the airport to identify transit access to the airport, as should their terminal move to the, to the east side of the runway, so that, we're already looking at that, that planning effort and combining that into that down the road. Does that help?
Yeah. Looking at any park-and-ride options as well for mass transit down the road?
We didn't identify any park-and-ride options in that area, but we can go back and look at that.
Okay. It, we may want to start thinking about, at least doing some surveys about where people work from that area. If there are a lot of folks still doing the transit into downtown, and they're living way out here, then it's something we're going to want to take a look at. If they're working regionally even more, the better. We don't have to worry about it as much. So, I think it might be an opportunity to start to do a survey in that area, particularly as that population grows, which is, if you've been out there lately, there's a lot of home building happening, so. All right. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Wesley.
So, ready now to talk a little about the transportation plan. Mark Pinti is here to review that document.
Thanks, John. Hello, Mayor and Council. Just like Jody and just like John, this is a picture of the cover of our current transportation plan done in 2002, so we decided it was time to, it would be a good time to update that. And conveniently, it was happening at the same time as the general plan and the transit plan, so we hopped on their coattails, so to speak, and we went, we used the same web marketing and public outreach, so we moved forward. One thing, two things we noticed really moving into this plan, there's some, obviously some changes between then and now. One is being the freeway system is now built, and the freeway impacted not just the crossroads, but the development around the freeway. And second of all, and John will, I'm sure, talk to this, on our public outreach and our surveys, the community and the public really kind of want to get back to a livability standard with transportation, having transportation incorporate bike, ped, and transit so that they can get to places through more multi-modes and get to their destinations easier. On that line, this is part one. We have three parts, which are similar to, again, the general plan. We're trying to work off that. And I'm not going to read all this, but this is a vision statement and our three goals. And in the plan itself, we have a bunch of objectives underneath each goal. And again, they're aimed at the livability, the multimodal approach at developing our future transportation network, and, yeah. So, so part two, again, we're kind of digging down into the parts of the transportation plan, and these include complete streets, roadway, transit, pedestrian, bike, aviation, travel-to-man, and ITS. Complete streets, aviation and ITS are new, and just briefly, you know, the complete streets is a concept of, again, developing our streets for all users, which we generally do now. But a big difference with complete streets is the idea of context sensitivity, where we build the street, each street, per where it's actually at. A street in a large public gathering place is going to be different than a street in an industrial park. A lot of ways we're going to achieve that is through design guidelines. Across the country now, a way that this is being achieved is through specific roadway design guides that move away from specific standards that can be spread across everything and more unique to, and more flexible to the location. And also with complete streets, I just want to give you a heads-up that the plan is part of that. A policy statement for the city is also a part of that. We brought our complete streets policy to the Transportation Advisory Board. They approved it, and we'll be bringing that along with the transportation plan when we come to council for adoption.
Quick question for you. Under transit element, have we talked much about the commuter rail and the possibilities down the road? And maybe Jody or one of you want to talk about, at least we're looking into it, there's some studies going on?
We have been working with ADOT and meeting with ADOT on their passenger rail study. It is, in our long-term scenarios, when we bring it back, we'll show, right now, they have, they're down to three options. We have two options that go through Mesa, and we've addressed them in our long-term scenarios. So, should either one of those options, depending on what they are, one of them would bring it up and run it along the US 60, so that would impact if light rail were to run along the US 60 or Main Street. The other one comes up, it shows it coming up, the existing UP alignment through Gilbert. So, we've adjusted our long-term planning scenarios to adjust for that.
All right. And the exciting part, we're looking at Gateway Airport and how it makes those connections and down to Tucson and other areas. So, I think there's a lot of exciting possibilities and look forward to see what that produces. I know it's a little long-term effort, but we don't want to lose it in, you know, the things that we think about, so. Appreciate that bit of information. Please continue.
Yeah, sure. Part three is the conclusion, where it's a final integration of all the components in a future plan. You know, we don't have any of our maps, figured you can see them here, but basically, you know, we have the different elements and how they are planned to be built out, and then we're going to put them all together and how they, and show how they integrate. And a big component, just like transit and just like the general plan, is using the different elements to connect activity centers and to provide better access within each individual neighborhood, given that, given the individual neighborhood's ways to go back and forth from their, from the residences. And finally, the schedule, simply, we're finishing up and reviewing our, this part three, which will bring the TAB in June, and the full document will be brought to TAB as a final draft in July. And similar to transit, we're looking forward to bringing the final document to council for adoption in August, along with the complete streets policy, as I mentioned.
Councilmember Luna.
I know, because of the economy, were some of the bus routes cut in, because of the economy? Are you going to revisit those and look at some rerouting or returning to some existing bus routes that were there in the past?
In the transit, as part of the economy, there's, we have, Mesa has about two-thirds of our bus routes are funded by Prop 400.
Okay.
So, when the economy started to take a downturn in 2007, we had to adjust the plan. The plan has to be balanced every year. So, some of those routes that were identified in the plan had to be pushed back or pushed back out of the plan. So, as revenues start to increase, we can look at, and that's something we'll be doing this next year, we'll be looking at what to do if we have the money to bring those routes, some of those routes back, if we have the money to, if we want to redistribute that money. That's something we're talking to Valley Metro about, and then looking at, possibly some of those routes may have to wait to a future sales tax to have the funding to do that.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. During your presentations to the community, I know one of the members of our, one of our advisory boards got a fair amount of media attention when she was critical of the plan, saying that it was de-emphasizing the use of the automobile. And I just want to comment on that. I think your plan's...
I beat her.
You beat her? Well, I think your plan's going in the right direction in terms of livability and connections, because the reality is, in terms, you're planning for what the demographics are telling us the new reality will be, in that the big group of old people like me, baby boomers, at some point in time are not, for whatever reason, are not going to be able to drive, but you're still active in the community, still working, still volunteering, still needing to get to places. You've got another group of much younger individuals who, for whatever reason, choose not to use automobiles and like to have multimodal connections to school, to work, to activities that they want to do. And so, certainly promoting the use of the automobile promotes sprawl, and that serves real estate developers well. But I think the general plan that you're proposing here really reflects the reality of what the urban society is and where our city is going. So, I just, I'm glad those elements remain in the plan and haven't come back out of it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mayor and Council, then we'll move on with some of the discussion of the full general plan document itself. Just a little quick background, we did begin this process a little over two years ago. It is starting to look at the city where we were with the current plan, and meeting with departments to see what needs they had. And then also began our citizen outreach process. We decided to take advantage of other things that were happening in the community as much as we could, and going out to different community events and being there to talk to people and gather input, as well as going to meetings of different groups and organizations that they were already having, again, so we could capture an audience that was there. We did hold two rounds of actual village meetings, where we went out and specifically advertised and brought people in to talk about where we were on the general plan. We had a plan advisory committee that assisted us throughout the process, made up of members of existing council boards to review what we're doing with the plan. Of course, we had our website, where you can still go to see the plan and some of the background information. Some of the things that we learned in this process, you know, we know we're a bedroom community that's grown rapidly over the last 30 years. We expect to grow quite a bit over the next 30 years, looking at 30 projections for MAG. They expect we'll grow by about 170,000 people. So, that's quite a few people to figure out where they'll live and where they'll work and all the things that go with it, with infrastructure. As Mark mentioned a minute ago, as we talked with the public and got their input, some of the things we heard repeatedly were the need for improved connections in our community, the multimodal ability to get to different places and not to have to go out of your way often to get to where you might want to go to improve the walkability within our community, and to create that more complete sense of place and kind of remove some of those sprawl aspects that we have today where everything looks so much alike, but really try to develop a recognizable community. And that led us then to kind of the statement that we felt like, as we were working on the plan, that we were trying to answer for ourselves. So, what is it that we need to do to create a more recognizable, self-sufficient city that attracts employment and provides a high-quality living environment? So, that's what the plan document really seeks to do. As we developed the document, there are several things we had in the back of our mind. Also, we wanted to make this a more general plan than the current one that we have. We felt like, while it's been a good document and guided us in many ways, it's been more specific than we need it to be, which led to more amendments than maybe we wanted to make over time, then provide some of the flexibility we would want to respond to change in development. We also felt it was important that we emphasized quality development as we move forward, and not just development, but really look at it, make sure we're getting quality development to add long-term value to the city. We wanted a more flexible document with use of characters rather than specific land uses, then overall, more usable document that's more flexible over time with more limited goals, policies, and strategies. And so, we do have available a summary document, and for those really adventurous, the full plan document. The latest versions of these are available online on our website, thisismymesa.org. The first full document that we had was completed at the end of January of this year. That document is still out there online. Through the review process, it's happened since then. We've got a lot of good comments that have helped us refine and improve the language that was in that draft. So, we have a strike-through version of that January document that a person can look at to see what those changes have been. And then finally, we have a clean document for what has been recommended for approval by the plan advisory committee. And then, two weeks ago, when we met with, last week, when we met with the P&amp;Z Board, and they made their recommendation at that point, there are a few final amendments that they made to the plan at that time, 11 more amendments. So, that clean version does actually have 11 strike-throughs in it, so you can see those changes that the P&amp;Z Board made. Once the council actually adopts the plan, then we'll go back to just a full, clean version for the public to look at. But those documents are out there available to look at, and again, once we have a final version, we'll also get hard copies available again and get them out for the public. What I'll do now is go briefly through the document that we have. This is an outline of the full document, four main sections. Section two is really what I consider to be the heart of the plan, where we get into what it is we need to do to move forward as a community. In chapter three, that's where we establish the vision for the community, where we want to go. And we start by recognizing kind of five key opportunities and challenges that we have. They're kind of both at the same time. One mentioned a minute ago by Councilmember Kavanaugh, that change in demographics that we know is coming, and how we respond to that as a community is going to be important in looking at development that occurs and the different infrastructure systems and how they can respond to that change in demographics. Public health, we know that we've got some issues out there, and how we develop and build as a city is important to that. We want to have the high-quality development, create that sense of place and more recognizable neighborhoods, and need to do a better job of responding to our desert environment. Those ideas led to the creation of a list of vision statements about where we want to be, what we want to look like in Mesa in 2040. And then it summarizes by identifying three guiding principles that are the keys to the rest of the plan document. You see it repeated in each chapter of the plan. We want to create and maintain a variety of great neighborhoods, grow and maintain stable and diverse jobs, and provide rich, high-quality public spaces and cultural resources. We know we need a variety of neighborhoods. We can't all be urban neighborhoods. We can't all be desert uplands neighborhoods. There's a variety. People are looking for different types of living environments. We need to provide those for the different things people are looking for. But each kind needs to have the quality that's in it, be able But each kind needs to have the quality that's in it and be able to be maintained well over time. We need to continue to grow our job base so that people aren't, that we aren't just that bedroom community, that people are living here and working here and have a variety of jobs and jobs that are stable and can change with the times. Then to attract both of those and make them stable and really be that complete community, we need those public spaces where we can gather and celebrate events and activities, variety scales and sizes. So that's what the next three chapters of the plan really concentrate on. Chapter four, starting off looking at the neighborhoods, trying to look at what do we need to be doing as a community, as a city, to help people be able to feel like they can and should continue to invest in their neighborhoods, their time, their resources to have strong neighborhoods. And so we've identified six primary topics then that we go through and describe each one, identify some activities that can be done within each of those topics to help ensure the quality of our neighborhoods over time. In this chapter, we have one goal. That goal is to create and maintain a variety of great neighborhoods. We thought upfront, there are a lot of different things we could say here and add to that, but it all came back to this one. And so again, part of the idea of being more general, more specific, we've kept it with the one statement. In this chapter, we also then deal with housing. Housing is a vital part, main part of what goes into neighborhoods. And so there are several kind of main areas of housing that we felt like we needed to look at and make sure that we are addressing. Here, we also talk about redevelopment on that smaller kind of neighborhood scale with those smaller commercial office spaces that we might find on a corner and how can we retrofit, redevelop those so that they integrate more and work with and serve their neighborhoods? We discuss that. We also discuss historic preservation in this chapter. Again, with all these, with the theme of being general, these are reviewed at a fairly high level that set the stage as we come back and do more of the neighborhood planning processes, sub area planning processes to focus specifically what we would do in a given area to address those. So chapter five covers the second of the three guiding principles, where we talk about jobs and create that diverse and stable job base. We identified again, six key elements that we think that we ought to focus on. First one, that business climate, where we go through the, basically, heat initiative and those areas of opportunity that we have as a city and how we'll continue to develop those. Our ability to develop the skills, the education system, the creation of quality spaces. We've identified four key employment areas within the city and how we can create a better sense of place within each of those and develop those employment areas that we have. Continue to work regionally, developing our infrastructure. And again, on that larger scale, that idea of retail redevelopment and revitalization. We know we've got a lot of commercial centers that were developed back in the boom years, 80s and 90s, and then some of them are not as active as they could be. And so how can we retrofit those and redevelop those over time? So again, one goal, growing and maintaining diverse, stable jobs. Chapter six goes to the third of the guiding principles, providing rich, high-quality public spaces. So first, we review the public spaces and some of those key things that go into creating those good, vibrant, active public spaces. And of course, this applies to city facilities such as parks and so forth, but it also will apply to private minority areas that might go into subdivision or some of those gathering spots that might be part of a commercial center and how we can work with the developers and they do those to make sure we're creating spaces that will work and be useful over time. And then we also review our cultural resources that we have in the community. Again, we're not talking about just city facilities here, but there are private things that are cultural resources within the community, some of the things like the Mekong Plaza or Lehigh Days activities, those things that go on in the community that give us that sense of place and uniqueness that we need to work with and help develop over time. And so again, one goal, which is the guiding principle. Here, we also then include specifics that Parks and Recreation were brought in, the Gold Medal 25 Plan, their key vision statements in there and made a part of this document. We also talk about the art center, museums, and libraries in this chapter. So we move to chapter seven, which is a community character chapter. This replaces our land use plan that we have currently, which is very specific, showing specific land uses. We've determined to take this more general approach, defining character areas, and then it gives us that opportunity to focus more on creating community, creating neighborhoods, and focusing on just individual developments and what they are doing. So we've created nine character types. With each character type, we, with some of the character types, we have subtypes to give a little bit more definition, but with each of those, we provide a general description of what is intended by that character type, provide some form and guideline standards about what, how development should look and feel to work with that character type, then some typical uses to give you an idea of what types of things could happen there and then what zoning districts relate to that. Within this chapter, we also talk about the use of sub area plans and neighborhood plans to provide that greater detail to areas of the city than we get through these general character areas. We also talk a little bit about land uses and growth areas. So this is the character area map. If you're familiar with the current land use map, you can see the differences in this, much more general and broad-based. Most of our cities, we know, is made up of residential neighborhoods, and that's the yellow on the map. We know that neighborhoods aren't just single-family houses, that there are a variety of housing types, there are parks, there are schools, there are churches, and other things that go into making neighborhoods happen. And so those are allowed within those neighborhood areas. You also see on here, probably just barely, some light pink areas, which are neighborhood village centers. Those are those smaller, less intense commercial areas that relate to the adjacent neighborhood and provide that opportunity for those daily shopping needs. One of the goals here is to make those more pedestrian-friendly over time, so people in the neighborhoods will feel like they really can use multimodal opportunities to get to those and support those. The red areas are the mixed-use activity districts. These are primarily retail areas, are the shopping malls and those types of things. We've used this name specifically, mixed-use activity districts, because we know a lot of these areas can't just be retail in the future. They need to have that opportunity for a variety of things to happen. And it's difficult for us to sit here today and know exactly what those things should be in the future. So we've tried to create a broad, general category that can allow a variety of things to happen, so as markets change, we can easily move with that.
Yeah, I can't thank you enough for this particular portion of what you're doing. If you look at East Main, some of the challenges on the west side, allowing that flexibility, allowing to let the free market come in and maybe dictate, I think that is a huge positive move in the right direction. So I appreciate what you've been able to find and hopefully that feedback from the community. Often I am asked about that big vacant, big box retail center that has been sitting vacant for years and what can we do, and hopefully I don't want to get on my soapbox too much, but ultimately it comes down to the private sector, but what can we do as a government and a regulatory agency to take away any of those barriers so somebody, a business or something can go in there and make that a thriving center again? So I think that's a huge little portion of this big plan to make sure a difference. So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that's exactly what we're trying to do, and we'll allow for that mix of office, commercial, entertainment, residential, some light employment, a variety of things that happen within these areas, appropriate for the specific area. And then the purple areas are the employment areas. Blue areas are similar, but they're more focused in terms of airports and hospitals and schools, some of those larger things like that. And then the green, the parks. So again, we provide those character types with, you also see the edges are fluffy because there's a little fuzzy on the edges because we don't know exactly where those boundaries should be. We don't want to be too prescriptive about that so that things can evolve over time. But closely related with that, we've also developed this development intensity map. And the light areas are least intensity and the darker areas are the most intensity. And so as we continue to develop and grow over time, you can see that most of the intensity is along Main Street. We've tried to coordinate this with what the Transit Plan is suggesting, where the main transportation corridor or transit corridor should be. And you can see along Main Street, you have those circles of higher intensity. Those coordinate with the canals and where we think that pre-true north-south transit routes will be, and those come together and create that opportunity for those nodes of activity. And so in conjunction then with the land use, with the character map we just looked at, where everything is neighborhoods and you might have some concerns about, well, what does that mean? Couple this with this intensity map and it kind of gives you a better idea of where some of those things will happen. From there, then we move into section three of the plan, which gets into more of the city side of the infrastructure and the resource, things we do to help generate the development of the city and respond to that. So the first chapter is Energy Resources chapter, where we review the electric and gas utilities and their operations. Chapter nine, Environmental Planning and Conservation Issues. We're talking about some of those quality issues and how we will protect the environment as we go forward. Chapter 10, Public Facilities. This covers a lot of facilities that aren't picked up in some of the other chapters and how we will expect those to grow over time, includes a map of current facilities and where we expect new facilities could be built into the future. Chapter 11, Public Safety, how we respond to the hazards that might happen and major events, that emergency management type of issues. And chapter 12 is where we pull in from the transportation plan, what they've been developing and review the high level of those items that Mark just covered. Then chapter 13 is the Water Resources, so both water and wastewater are discussed in this chapter. And there we move into the final section of the plan, section four, about administration and implementation of the plan. We have a chapter to talk about financing of the city, how are we going to pay for all these things into the future, what are those resources we have and how might they be used into the future to accomplish our goals? Chapter 15, a development review. Again, because we have this more general character approach, we felt like it was important to include some statements about how we will then review development against those character types so that we kind of have a standard for doing that, people have some expectation about how that will happen. And then the final chapter in the plan is Implementation Amendment, reviews again the tools we have available for plan implementation. Within each of the chapters, we've had the goal, a few policies and strategies. We've summarized all those here and then also listed which departments are responsible primarily for, and secondary responsibility for implementation of each of those policies and strategies. And then we also talk about how we'll continue to work with the plan that we plan to come back about every three years and look at the policies and strategies with the council and talk about what's working and see if we need to change any of those, so this is a living document, not wait just a full 10 years to come back and do that. And also defines what's a major and what's a minor amendment to the plan. We've made that a little higher level in the plan. We actually don't expect we'll have any major amendments based on the approach that we're taking. Anything would most likely be a minor amendment, and even a lot of those can happen just through the development process. So Mayor and Council, that's a quick overview of the total plan document itself. Just want to highlight a few of what we think are the major differences between this plan and the previous plan. Again, to kind of talk about these, we have that more, this more flexible approach that we have so we can respond more easily to market changes while still providing some assurance of where the community wants to go. The focus on three guiding principles, you'll see that in each of the chapters and goals in each chapter, it always comes back to those three guiding principles, about how are we going to maintain neighborhoods, develop jobs, and create those public spaces. Improves that connection between sub area planning and the overall general plan compared to what we have in the current plan. And then we work closely with the Transit Transportation folks to make sure the land use and the transportation facilities are coming together to serve the community. So we're getting down to the end. We will have a council be holding a public hearing on June 16th to see if we have any other public comments to make on the plan document. Then we'll look for council approval and council setting the election for November and then the November election. Any questions, comments?
Questions? We realize it's a tremendous amount of hard work, long nights, you know, long hours into the evenings for staff and others, but the outreach has been tremendous. And hopefully, this is a process that the community can look at this, really have some input into the changes. I've already heard of frequent, some different ideas just recently along the lines of economic development and others. And then having the voters be able to vote on it, this is their plan and they'll be the ones. So kindly, I don't want to hear about it later that they had no input. I mean, we're putting out a huge amount of effort. Councilmember Summers.
While we're on the topic of economic development, as you develop out this plan, I want to make sure that we stress the importance of airports, Gateway, and Falcon Field as tools in our economic development tool chest in that, quite frankly, residential development doesn't, is not compatible to that economic development goal or the growth of the airport. So we need to be very, very careful about that.
Mayor and Councilmember Summers, I'm glad you mentioned that. If you go back and look at that strike-through document from the first draft to the second, you'll see a lot of those changes were improvements to that specific topic to make sure we had covered that well, and hopefully we have got that well covered.
And I wouldn't mind seeing that being part, very open part of the discussion as we go into the vote, so that the community knows when they vote on it, future councils will be able to see, not only do we have a plan that was voted on that mentions it specifically, but it was an open part of the process and something that we were openly discussing.
Right. Councilmember Luna.
And I know the Mesa Chamber of Commerce has weighed in into the plan, has made some great recommendations, and I'm happy that you've incorporated those ideas into the plan. So thank you.
And I sound like a broken record, but we have learned lessons from decades past that we need to build into these plans some sustainability and jobs. When I go out and visit in neighborhoods, parents, others, they say, hey, I'm tired of getting my kid educated and they have to go somewhere else to work. They want their families back, they want their kids to have a great, high-paying job here. And so I've been firmly committed, I know others, council members, to making sure that whatever we do helps to support that. That's the piece that's missing and hopefully we continue that. But any other input? Yes, Councilmember Benelli.
John, I just want to make a comment on the rapid changes that you guys made with the public input from last week with the planning and zoning with the Rail Group and even with comments that I made when you and I met last week. Was pretty impressed with how quickly you got that turned around and implemented into the new draft. Thank you.
Yeah, really a positive process so far, so we appreciate that. If there's nothing else, thank you so much. We appreciate the information and presentation. Okay, our next item is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the continuation of the alternative expenditure limitation, commonly known as home rule option. Ms. Candace.
Thank you, Council and Mayor and Council. There's a lot of words that you just said, and really it comes down to, home rule is really the term that we use a lot when we talk about this particular option for the voters and for the city of Mesa. It is one on your agenda for June 2nd, there is a public hearing regarding this, and so we wanted to make sure that we did a complete overview today. Home rule, basically, home rule allows the city council in the city of Mesa to maintain local control over setting the limit for the budget on an annual basis. That's basically the gist of what home rule allows us to do. The reason why we have to do home rule or the reason why we refer home rule to the voters is based in the Arizona Constitution. So part of the requirements for adopting the budget, like we did for 14, our fiscal year 1415 that we just adopted, is we have a couple stipulations that we need to follow. The first one is the budget must always be balanced. What that means is that your estimated expenditures must be equal to or less than your estimated resources you have available for that particular year. That one always stays in effect. The other requirement that we have through the state statutes is that there's a, the state puts an expenditure limitation on all the municipalities. The limitation is based on the 1979-80 expenditures and then adjusted for population growth and inflation through the years. So it's a formula-based limitation. Part of that requirement also allows cities to opt out of that limitation and have more of a local control of that particular limitation on an annual basis. And that's what we're going to talk about today. There are three different ways that a municipality can opt out of the expenditure limitation. There are three different alternatives. The first one is home rule. Home rule is what the city has chosen to do since the year, since 2000. Home rule, again, it allows maintaining local control of the budget on an annual basis. So basically what that means is, rather than using the state's formula to calculate what our expenditure limit should be in a given year, the city council adopts the limit by adopting the budget. We are still held to having a balanced budget, meaning our expenditures will still be within the resources available, but the city council will actually set that limit on an annual basis rather than the state formula. A permanent adjustment is also available. This, the city has not done this in the past. What this would do would actually be to reset that 79-80 base that you would use. You would reset that to another number, another dollar amount, and then that would still be applied to the formula and be then population and inflation adjusted through time. It would just reset the base. Going forward, it doesn't mean that you would never have to reset the base again. The permit is a little bit misleading on that because at some point, you would probably knock up against that limit again, and then you'd be back doing another permanent base or back to a home rule. The other option is a one-time override. It's available for only one year at a time, but it does allow the council to refer to a special election in the May to, that would apply to the following fiscal year. So those are the three options. And I mean, the home rule I neglected to mention is effective for four fiscal years for each time, and then it would be referred to the voters for renewal again. And that's where we're at this time. The state does have some sanctions or penalties if a municipality were to overrun their limitation in a particular year. We're adding all the way up to a 10% if you over, over expend by 10% of the state formula limit, it would be one-third of the state income tax that was due to the city the following year. They would withhold that and actually give that out to the other cities instead of us. So there are some limitations that come along with this as well. Here in the city of Mesa, we've had a home rule alternative in place since March of 2000. It has been referred to the voters four times during this time period between then and now, and has been approved each time. And so we've been under a continuous renewal of that home rule since two thousand. Our current authorization will expire in June of two thousand fifteen. So right now, for the fourteen fifteen fiscal year, we are, we're still with a home rule, but for fifteen sixteen, we would be, we would not unless it was renewed. Some of the things that the state formula does not take into consideration, again, it is adjusted for population and inflation, but it does not always follow some of the voter-approved initiatives that come through the city. So in the city of Mesa, since nineteen seventy-nine eighty, we have had a few increases in our revenues voted by the citizens who were wanting additional services in the city. Some of those include the Quality of Life sales tax. Our Quality of Life sales tax is currently funding a hundred and twenty of our officers and sixty-five of our firefighters. It was also intended to do some in the Mesa Art Center, as well as some other services around the city. When those revenues return, we hope to again, fund some of those services around the city. The other one is our local street sales tax. That was approved by the voters as an increase to help, help in our operations and maintenance of our streets within the city of Mesa. This augments our highway user revenue tax that comes through the state. And so those are the two funding sources for our transportation department. The other thing that's not, a regional-type fund, so when we talked about, and Jody talked about Proposition four hundred when it comes to the transit and so forth, well, we also receive Proposition four hundred money to do street construction projects. And again, those are voter-approved within the region, but not included in the state limitation formula, so they're not taken into account as an increase in revenues and therefore an increase in expenditures for the municipalities. If the home rule would not be renewed in the upcoming election, or if it was not referred to an election, the city would have to come within constraints of the, of our limits. When we look at, to give you an example, when we look at our fiscal year thirteen fourteen that we are currently in today, it was a one-point-three-three billion-dollar budget. Some of those items are excluded, so there are some exclusions, for example, things like debt service, bond construction projects, and grants, and our trust funds. So those types of things do not have to conform to the limitation, but our general operating does. If we looked at our thirteen fourteen adopted budget, we would have had to reduce that budget by one-hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars in order to conform to our allowed state limitation for the fiscal year thirteen fourteen.
Just as a reminder, what is the budget that has to come out? How much is it this coming year?
When, our state limitation is just over about five-hundred-million dollars each year, and again, that's the operating portion of it. When we talk about reducing one-hundred-and-eighty-four million, we're not talking about just the general fund, it's all of the expenditures that would be subject to the limitation. That would be the enterprise, the local street sales tax that we talked about, the general fund, any of our restricted revenue funds that we receive. The only things that would not be part of that one-hundred-and-eighty-four would be things like, that are exempted. So things like grants, our trust funds, our internal services, and our bond construction projects.
So the one-hundred-and-eighty-four would be, one-hundred-and-eighty-four, or, one-hundred-and-eighty-four would be, what percentage of the total number? What's, of the things that are included, how much is that?
We have, it's, it is, we'd be about, so about five-hundred-and-twenty-three-million dollars, roughly is our expenditure limitation. There'd be one-hundred-and-eighty-four-million dollars above that. So, I didn't do the math, but about two-hundred-million dollars more than that, seven, eight, so you're about eight-hundred-million dollars, so one-hundred-and-eighty-four out of eight-hundred-million dollars.
So about?
Yeah.
Twenty percent of the budget.
Yeah, because it's not the one-point-three, it's about eight-hundred-million dollars. You'd have to cut one-hundred-and-eighty-four.
You'd have to cut another twenty percent of the budget.
Right, of the operating budget. These would not be construction projects. If we were to exceed the expenditure limitation by more than that ten percent, which is the top penalty, just as a one-third of the state shared revenue, the urban revenue, income tax basically, it'd be about seventeen-point-seven-million dollars would be the penalty of the city of Mesa. That's revenue that we would not receive in the following year. A home rule election needs to be referred to by the city council. It does take a two-thirds vote to refer it to the voters of the city of Mesa, that's five votes. It is required that it actually occurs during, during an election where a council member or mayor is to be elected, so basically one of the normal election cycles. We could put, we are, the city is able to put it on the primary or the general, and the city has usually chosen to put it on the general election due to the voter turn not usually being higher on the general election versus the primary.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Question for Alfred. Okay, how many votes are we going to need then on, you're asking us to do this Monday night?
No, actually, Monday night is actually just the public hearing. It won't be, won't be considered till June sixteenth.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have full council.
Well, if not, we'll do it July second.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just.
Yeah, we've got a few days.
To start alarm meeting.
Yeah, no, thank you. But we, we have June sixteenth, and then we have the two meetings in July, or at least one of the meetings in July, I think we can call.
Right, well, we need to call the election on July first.
So you need six votes.
We need five votes.
Five votes, sorry. Five votes, okay.
Yeah, it's not the, it's not the, it's just, it's the five votes, the two-thirds, which is five votes, which is the same number of votes that you would need when you actually adopt a budget. It's the same comparison to adopting the final budget for the city of Mesa. If it's approved in November of two thousand fourteen, that within the authorization would be in fact through the year fiscal year eighteen nineteen. At that point, it would need to be then referred and renewed again. So again, it's a four-year cycle going through that. Again, what's on the agenda for Monday, June second, is the first public hearing. So we're required to do two public hearings. After the second public hearing on June sixteenth is when you'd actually consider the resolution that would refer home rule to an election. On July first, they would come back and actually call the election, and home rule would be one of the items on the election for November of two thousand fourteen.
Question, Councilmember Benelli.
So Candace, I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe Dan. What has been the percentage of the passage of this in the, in the past? Is it overwhelming or?
Yes.
It's, it's definitely passed. I'd have to get to the exact, exact turnout figures.
Yeah, it's pretty overwhelming. It's like one of the more highly-supported initiatives out there. What's unusual about this initiative, or about this provision, is that it's an expenditure limitation, so you have to reduce your expenditures. It doesn't control, you still would be receiving the sales tax, you just wouldn't be able to authorize to spend it. So it seems, it's kind of a strange, I guess, item in the budgets, but essentially what it does is just confirm that the community is looking to the council to make the decisions, local control of how we make decisions here for Mesa, as opposed to having this formula that was written back in the nineteen seventies.
Nineteen seventy-nine eighty.
Control our decisions regarding the operations of the budget. So I think with that, at least as far as two thousand we know of, it's been overwhelmingly approved each time.
And that's, that's really the, kind of the overview of home rule and what home rule is, if there's any other questions or concerns that we can address for you.
Any questions along those lines? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I won't get on my soapbox. He almost got me fired up there for a minute.
I'm sorry.
I will say that I think the reason why in this community it's overwhelmingly approved is people appreciate that more local control. It's the best kind of government when you get it closest to the people, and they reach out to us day and night and early in the morning, and so they have a say in their government. And so, anyway, we appreciate that, and as you can tell, I'm a big supporter of, of that whole approach, of the home rule. Okay, next item, let's see here, is item three, information regarding the job order contracting projects. Did anybody have any questions on those?
Yeah.
No questions, okay. Looks like we'll acknowledge receipt of minutes in various boards of committees. Do we have a motion? A motion and a second? No comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Councilmember Kavanaugh and then Councilmember Summers.
Thank you, Mayor. On Memorial Day, I attended a service on your behalf at Mesa Cemetery, and wanted to compliment disabled American veterans who organized the service. There were over a hundred, about a hundred and twenty people both attending and participating, and it was, it was a very nice service. Cemetery looked great. Want to compliment our workers on the, a great job that they do there. And particularly wanted to recognize the East Valley Young Marines who helped out with the service. It was a hot day, but it was, it was a very well-done event. I was very proud. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you for doing that. Councilmember Summers.
Just as a point of personal privilege, my daughter graduated from high school last week, and it looks like she's qualified, she will be going to NAU, and it looks like she will qualify for her scholarships. We're just waiting for the final word, so. We will be empty nesters with training wheels, as I like to say, because they do keep coming back from time to time, mostly to eat our food and have their mom do laundry.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. Councilmember Luna.
Last Friday, we had mobile office hours at the Red Mountain Multi-Generation Center, and we were just trying to see how we could reach out to our community, and it was quite successful. We were there from ten to twelve, and we had a number of residents come and talk to us about issues and just things that they cared about the community. There was one elderly gentleman said, you know, if I'm going to present a problem, I'm going to come up with a solution, so I really appreciate that kind of attitude. It was really cool, but I do want to thank my assistant, Charlotte McDermott, and Officer Dana McBride for being there. It was a hit, and I think we're going to continue doing that sometime in the fall.
Nice, good to hear. Councilmember Benelli.
I just want to report the reason why I wasn't at the city council meeting, my